Hello.
Hello, exhausted.
Welcome, everyone. We will call to order the Council, Casa Grande Council meeting for tonight. And since I don't think we have anybody here to lead the invocation, can I impose on you, Matt?
No problem.
Please join us.
Heavenly Father, we ask you, you know, we ask you, we thank you tonight for allowing us to gather here. We ask your blessing on this meeting. We thank you for letting us get into this new year relatively easy and everything going well, and ask that you watch over us up the coming year to help us make the right decisions and, you know, help all the people of Casa Grande. And of course, we also ask that you watch over our first responders here in the city and, of course, around the world for our great nation. And just thank you for letting us have these rights in this great country to meet like this and to make these decisions. And please, again, guide us to make the best decisions we can, in your name. Amen.
Please join us. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Ralph. Okay, next item of business is the roll call. Mary is absent tonight. Do we want to...
Make a motion to excuse.
Mayor, make a motion to excuse.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Note that Mary is excused.
So noted.
And that everyone else is here.
Mayor McFarland, as far as the minutes go, the, I move approval of the council's regular meeting minutes from December 18th, and except for the record, the police personnel retirement board minutes from September 22nd, and the police personnel retirement board meetings from December 6th, as they're presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Minutes are approved. Claims against the city.
Mayor McFarland, I move to pay the claims against the city dated December 13 through the 26th as they're presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Claims are approved. Meeting agenda approval. Larry, any changes from staff?
We have none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'm gonna make one change. Since we have a executive session, item number M, I'm gonna move item number N, which is reports, we'll move it just before item M. Lots of Ms. and Ns there. Did you get that okay, Gloria?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We don't have any special presentations, so consent agenda items. Yes?
Have a motion to approve the meeting agenda, please.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the meeting agenda as amended.
Skip right by that. Second.
It's been moved in second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting agenda is approved. Next item, G, consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion, one roll call vote of the council. Let me know separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of public show requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of agenda.
Any questions?
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protembarela.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, moving to item H, public comments. So we'll open the floor to anyone who would like to approach the council. Okay. Close public comments and move to item I, I-1. Mr. Ardestine?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Staff is recommending that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Core Construction for pre-construction services for the main library expansion project at a price not to exceed $40,802. This project is in the current CIP plan, and we are looking to add additional meeting space and availability of study rooms at the main library. There are only two rooms at this location that can be reserved at this time, and they're used very heavily. So this project will increase the number of rooms available, give more users more flexibility, and the ability to serve public requests more efficiently. This project, we're asking for pre-construction services. We've chosen to do a design-build method to deliver this project. We did go out with an RFQ back in August. We received six submissions. We had a qualified panel do interviews, and the top three companies were interviewed on September 27th. Core Construction is the recommended firm that we're choosing. Core Construction and Hunt and Caraway, as their designers, do have extensive experience with numerous library projects within the state and have won several awards, so we're very confident that they can provide the services that we're needing. The budget for this project overall is $500,000. It is in the capital improvement plan, previously approved by the city council, and it will be funded by development impact fees. The proposal that Core has submitted actually has two different categories of work, because we don't know the exact scope of the project yet. If they just do improvements within the building only, the project would be $37,052 for the pre-construction services. If we end up expanding the building and making the footprint of the building bigger, the pre-construction services would rise to $40,802. Early in the project, early in the meetings, we will know which direction we are going. So at this, a guaranteed maximum price will be brought to the city council at a later date. So at this time, we will stand for questions. Amber Kent, our library manager, is here to answer specific questions about the library operation, and I can answer any questions about the pre-construction services as needed.
Ralph? On this project, what will be the increase in terms of seating or rooms? Have that been projected out?
It hasn't been projected out, but we're looking at a, at a meeting room.
One?
Yeah, one meeting room and a couple of study rooms. Of course, the budget will determine the square footage, and then we're also trying to make this a very multi-use, flexible space that could potentially be used for meetings and for study rooms. And we're also looking at the current space that we have and if we can reallocate anything within the library. So today, we're very open as to what we want to do with the project, and we're looking to the designers to give us some good feedback.
Thank you. Mr. Powell?
I would just ask the director, I think the larger footprint, as much as we use the library and the ability to have group meetings and all of those things, would probably be your recommendation? Are you ready to give a recommendation?
I'm not ready to give a recommendation at this time.
I was talking to her. (Laughter).
Well, then I'm... I would say it's highly likely that we would want to increase the footprint, but it all depends on what we can and can't do.
Matt?
You know, along with increasing the footprint, which, as long as in budget, you know, no problem, I have a couple of questions. One would be, how big a room are we looking at, like 50 people's size, 100 people's size, or?
Probably smaller than that, I'm guessing.
Okay.
The biggest room we have at the main library right now fits about 100 people. That's the activity room upstairs. So the biggest we could get is probably about that size and maybe a couple smaller study rooms, but I don't know that it can, it all depends on what the architects say we can do with, with what we've got.
Okay, and then we had that plan, we kind of talked about it a little bit earlier, about moving the street through the park and making that, would this, I mean, they're gonna take that into account, I hope, if they do expand the footprint, so?
Right, we're thinking about on the south side of the library, where the, close to the fifth, fourth street.
Yeah.
Fourth street. So it's the opposite side of the library from that project.
Okay.
You get closer to the street.
Mm-hmm.
And on the first level, too?
Yeah.
It seems as though we recently remodeled the library, so I wanted to see if you can give a little history on, you know, when we did that and why this is necessary.
Yes, I can. So in 2006 was when we had the bond election, and at that point, I think we were, we were thinking that we might expand the library, but then when it came time to actually renovate the main library in 2013, they determined that that, that wasn't, we didn't have the funds necessary to expand at that point, so we just worked with, within the library. But now we have more of the development impact fees, and so we're ready to look at expanding.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Sure.
What types of groups are using the space right now that, that you see the most, or is it?
A lot of nonprofit groups use this space, so the Daughters of the American Revolution, or sometimes like the Arizona Department of Transportation, they'll rent the rooms. Lots of different groups, a lot of government groups, nonprofits. We have some family visits, so supervised visits, a lot of those take place in the library. And often, if we don't have rooms, people are having those kind of private interviews out in the main space of the library, which isn't really appropriate.
I do have a follow-up question. Amber, you mentioned about some businesses or organizations renting out. Have you guys done any kind of analysis as far as budget, what that might look like, if that would increase, you know, any budget for the library?
We don't charge for the rooms at the library, and that's why we limit it to nonprofits. So no commercial groups can use the library spaces.
Some government groups, though.
Oh, she said rent, and that was the key word for me.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. All right, then can I get an ordinance, please?
Ordinance?
Resolution, I'm sorry.
Resolution number 5079. A resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting their proposal for professional services from Core Construction to provide pre-construction services for the main library expansion, authorizing expenditure of public funds in amount not to exceed $40,802, and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move for passage of resolution number 5079 as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protembarela.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. Okay, item I-2. Reggie, is that you?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Staff recommends that mayor and council authorize staff to execute contracts and issue purchase orders for two model year 2017 Chevy Tahoe's pursuit vehicles, and enter into agreements and issue purchase orders as necessary for the outfit and equipment of the vehicles. The total amount for which spending authority is being requested under this action is an amount of $115,129.52. In addition, although it's not part of this authorization, staff anticipates spending approximately $24,000 to further equip the vehicle with camera and mobile data computers once procurement of these items is complete. The request proposes the purchase of two 2017 Chevrolet Tahoe police pursuit vehicles. These units are additional vehicles to the police department in support of our fleet efficiency program. These two vehicles have already been approved by council and will help us better in our program. A formal, we did, fleet services did reach out to local businesses to make them aware of this opportunity to bid, but Midway Chevrolet was the only responsive and responsible bidder to act upon that information. Therefore, staff recommends award the contract to this vendor. Under this bid, the price of each vehicle is $36,640.52, with a total cost of $69,281.4 for the two vehicles. The communications equipment needed for this vehicle consists of two radios and associated equipment to make those radios operational. Two communication packages will be needed. The purchase of this equipment is proposed to be made through a corporate use of State of Arizona purchasing contract currently awarded to Motorola. This is the same contract utilized from previous purchases. The cost of this is $7,433.59 per radio, with a total amount for this equipment, $14,867.18. The outfitting of the vehicle consists of providing all the pertinent equipment to include light sirens, pushbars, and decals, as well as the installation of all the communication and technology components. Our staff intends to utilize the existing contract currently held by MHQ of Arizona for this work. Utilizing this contract for a total of two vehicles will receive approximately, will receive approximately equipment and upfitting in accordance with the contract for a total amount of $27,966.8. We're also looking to purchase two radars for this vehicle. Our purchase of this equipment is proposed to be made through Corporate Use of Arizona National Association of State Procurement officials through custom signals. This contract is effective through October 31st, 2018. The total amount for this equipment is $3,015.22. As I mentioned earlier, we have approximately $24,000 for technology equipment, and we're not requesting spending authority at this time, but that technology equipment consists of two computer systems, which we're currently testing a different computer system, the CF-2033, which IT is working with us to ensure that that's a compatible fit for our vehicle. If that is, then we will be going with these two computer sets for a total amount of approximately $12,000. The ink card camera system, we're currently in the process of testing several different models to see what best fits the needs of our department and of the city. Once we've identified the proper fit for the city and for the equipment that we need, we request that those two, that the money be set aside for two camera systems in the amount of $12,000. Pending your questions.
Matt?
I've got a couple. First, I appreciate you guys getting the whole pack, you know, in the past, we've had the vehicles and then the outfit, so it's good to see all of it in one place. Talk about the fleet efficiency program, because these are new vehicles to the fleet, so we're not retiring any vehicles to the fleet.
These two vehicles are additional vehicles to, for the efficiency of the program to ensure that we have vehicles in our patrol pool for officers not afforded the opportunity to participate in the program, and to have vehicles available for those officers that are approved of the program.
Okay, and how's that working out so far?
So far, that's working out great for us. We've issued a total of 13 vehicles in the program, and we still have nine additional vehicles to issue out once we are up and have a proficient amount, number of vehicles within our fleet for both the take-home program, efficiency program, and the pool of vehicles for officers coming in for patrol duties.
So this will help, like, when, because I know in the past, we've had a little, a couple of issues with some cars being down for service, and we, so this will help?
Yes, sir. This will help with that due to maintenance issues and vehicles being taken offline for certain reasons. This gives us additional vehicles to keep us moving forward and provide a service to the community.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Powell?
Is this more of an all-purpose vehicle, or, I know it has the radar component, would it be used for traffic or for a number of different things?
Yes, sir. This is an all-purpose vehicle for patrol functions. So that includes investigations, traffic incidents, conducting traffic control, so it's a multipurpose vehicle, sir.
Very good. Anybody else?
I was surprised to see only one bid. Usually, there's a couple on there, but was that price comparable to what we paid last time for these vehicles, since it was only one bid? I mean, I'm assuming you compared it to what we've had, paid in the past.
When we put the bid out, we put it up for 2017 models and 2018s. Midway came back with a bid for 2017s, actually have them in their stock right now, and it came in a little bit, about $1,200 over what we paid six months ago for the ones that we just purchased.
Okay.
So not too bad, and if we would've went to a 2018 model, it would've been $4,000 or $5,000 more.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, other questions? Can I get an ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 3055. An ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting bids from various vendors for the purchase of two 2017 police pursuit vehicles and for the installation of equipment for those vehicles, authorizing the expenditure of public funds in amount not to exceed $115,129.52, and authorizing execution of contracts with or purchase orders to various vendors.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of ordinance number 3055 as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protembarela.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, to item K. A-1 is a first order of business on creating judicial selection committee.
Was it sure if you were ready for me, Mr. Mayor? Sorry. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Staff is recommending that mayor and council pass an ordinance creating a judicial selection committee in accordance with provisions of the city charter and declare an emergency. Staff also requests the mayor and council by motion approve the draft job advertisement to be used for the recruitment of the city judge. There was a draft job announcement attached with your council packets. I've handed out an updated one. The only change is in the, the minimum qualifications. The original one said possession of a bachelor's degree and some level of judicial experience. We just changed that to and slash or, so that combination of education and experience could be considered.
Okay.
So the city charter prescribes the process by which the city judge is selected. This normally takes place every two years because they serve co-terminus with the mayor. With the resignation of Judge O'Neil, it's necessary to create the committee once again. The judicial selection committee is created by ordinance with the appointment of five qualified residents to serve on the committee, done by motion. The charter states the committee shall be appointed by the mayor with approval of the council. This ordinance creates the committee and describes the duties as required by the charter. An emergency clause is requested due to the charter timeline for the committee to do its work. This action will be followed by the nomination of the five-member committee by the mayor in a separate action. As drafted, the ordinance sets the deadline imposed by the charter of January 29th, 2018, for the committee to provide its recommendations to council, and also provides the committee will provide council with at least three, but not more than five, names for consideration. Council would then select a judge from the recommendations provided by the committee, and the judge so selected will be appointed to fill the remainder of the term, which would expire December of 2018. Unlike most positions in the city, the position of city judge doesn't actually have a job description and isn't actually set up the same way as it is any other one on the staff complement. So because the position is created by charter and is one of the few positions directly hired by the city council, in addition to creating committee, we're recommending, we're requesting that you approve by motion the amended job advertisement that was, the draft that was handed to you. The document simply sets forth some of the primary duties of the position, as well as establishes a baseline for the minimum qualifications required for the position. As drafted, the advertisement would require applicants to possess a bachelor's degree as well and/or some level of experience in either the legal or judicial field, although it would allow the committee to consider a combination of experience and education as well. Staff believes that these minimum qualifications will help the committee narrow the applicant field, but will also provide a broad enough base to not unduly deter qualified applicants from applying for the position. Finally, if approved, staff would anticipate advertising and opening the job promptly for applications through our online portal, and would leave the job open for applications through January 12th, 2018. This should give interested applicants time to complete the application, but also leave sufficient time for the committee to review them and meet as necessary to conduct the processes the committee deems appropriate to provide recommendations to council within the timeline established. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Just to, some points of clarification. So this, we're gonna approve this under an emergency clause so that we can approve it tonight, correct? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so, so that we can post, basically post for the job.
Yes.
Because we really only have 30 days to fill the job.
Exactly.
So the first, the first action is to approve this ordinance, and then, and within that ordinance, then we'll have the revised advert, this piece? Is this not part of it?
No, I'll defer to Brett. He could probably explain it better, or Larry, either one.
I think as...
I was just trying to figure out where this goes.
Yeah, we were asking that you approve that by a separate motion. It's a motion-only item, but it's separate from the ordinance. It's not included in the ordinance.
Okay, is it on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. First one is the judicial committee?
It's under K-1, but you're gonna do a separate...
First one is the ordinance.
Yeah.
Establishing the...
Then one more point, is, is in this job description now, they do not have to be a lawyer?
Correct.
It's anybody, it's open to anybody for this court.
And you don't have to have a bachelor's degree with the and or?
And or.
The and or, yeah.
Okay, so the first piece, then I need an ordinance for the, the establishment of the committee, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Ordinance number 3056. An ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, creating a judicial selection committee, describing its duties, and declaring an emergency.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 3056 as presented.
Second.
With an emergency? Perfect.
With an emergency?
With an emergency.
With an emergency, yes.
Thank you. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote on the ordinance, please?
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protembarela.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. Okay, now I can take, I can accept a motion to approve the ad.
I move approval of the...
The revised one.
The revised ad.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I can just do a roll call vote on that, can I? Can all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, approved. Okay, we'll move to item K-2, consider appointment of the judicial selection committee.
Okay, again, Mr. Mayor and Council, staff recommends that Mayor McFarland, with approval of the city council, appoint five residents of the city to serve as the current judicial selection committee. Again, with the resignation of Judge O'Neil, we are, find ourselves doing this again, and as I understand it, the mayor has recommended the following five residents to serve on the judicial selection committee. Would you like me to read that list, Mayor, or would you like to do that?
I'll, I'll do it, if that's okay. So this is the same committee that, except for one person, there's a one new person on it. Teresa Georgini is new. All the rest were on the selection committee last year. And so this is the same group, and they volunteered to do it again this year. So first of all, I want to thank them for doing that publicly.
Pays really well, right?
Yeah, pays great. And so it does take some time, and again, we appreciate their, their volunteering, so. Does anybody else have any comments or questions on it?
Yep. Very well thought.
Okay, then can I get, it's actually just a motion, right?
Recommendations that were made by the mayor of the five people to serve.
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the committee has been approved. Now, consider appointment of an interim city judge.
And one more time on this subject, Mayor and Council, it is recommended that Mayor and Council by motion appoint an interim city judge and try and applicable pay. Again, with the resignation of Judge O'Neil, it's necessary for the mayor and council to go through the process of selecting his replacement. In order to provide as much continuity as possible without the disruption of other functions of the court, staff is recommending that the mayor and council consider the appointment of Robert Mitchell to serve as the interim city judge. Mr. Mitchell is currently authorized as a deputy city judge by the council and has indicated a willingness to serve in this limited capacity until a new judge can be seated.
As little time as possible, right, Bob? As little time as possible, right, Bob? Okay, does anybody have any?
Comments on that? Questions?
I just was going to, if somebody didn't have questions, nominate Bob as the, as the judge to fill in.
I was going to vouch for him because he is my government teacher and the mayor at the same time.
And mayor.
Yeah, but he was my next-door neighbor.
You're vouch for him.
You know, I don't know anybody we'd trust more than, than Bob Mitchell, so we're in good hands.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you for stepping in.
And I, and I also wanted to thank the other staff for being patient. The, theities here, and you know, just your patience and going through all this. I know it's a little tough, you know, with all of this going on, the short time, so thanks to all the other staffer, for their willingness to help out and be patient with all this, so.
Absolutely. Okay, now, you've made a motion. Do I need a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the interim city judge, Mr. Robert Mitchell. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you again, Mr. Mitchell. All right, one more K item, consider appointment of Mayor Pro Tem for- As customary, each, once a year, we change the, the Mayor Pro Tem, and so this year, I'll accept the nomination for your replacement.
The nomination is, Bob, we always had to figure this out, how it goes on, but it's Matt's turn to be Mayor Pro Tem. Yeah, so I would, I would therefore nominate him to be the Mayor Pro Tem.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, and thank you for doing a great job.
Big shoes to fill.
You have to go do speeches and stuff.
I know. I'm kind of shy, but I'll-
He likes that microphone.
Yeah. Okay, well, then I moved the reports, item N, to go next, so we'll just start over here with you, Donna, if you want to give your report first, then we'll move across the bench.
Holidays, holidays. The, I just want to mention that Mike and I spent New Year's Eve here in city council chambers, thanks to Mr. Rains. We had 40 or so, 50 officers that were here from a lot of different agencies that, that were here and working, and we did have, you know, some, some people that didn't quite get the message, but overall, it was, you know, really a great, great night. We had a lot of people that were out keeping our city safe. One of the things I wanted to mention was that, you know, Mike and I kind of headed up, but there's a lot of churches and organizations that help bring in food for the officers because they're right out on the street, coming back and, you know, dropping people off and going back out. The local SAD chapters, who are the Casa Grande Alliance, did goodie bags for all the officers. They put together like 100 bags, kind of, you know, so they can grab and go, and I have some extras that I'll, I'll give you guys before the end of the meeting, but the nice thing about it was that they did that on their own, and each one of the SAD chapters signed the bags and had a note with the officers, and it really meant a lot to the officers, but it says a lot to our young people that are in our communities. I just wanted to mention the SAD chapters and that they took time out during their holiday break to do that for the officers. So it was great. And that's it.
Matt? Yep, again, with the holidays, I just want to thank, it's neat to see our community over the holidays with people like the SAD, and Donna, and Mike, and everyone getting together to support our community, and then over Christmas with everyone giving food, and the Youth Commission went and fed a family and gave them presents, and it's just a great time to remember what, what kind of community we live in, and we're really thankful for that. So as the new year comes, I just hope that stays throughout the year, and, and I, you know, Larry wrote a nice letter to the city, and that was much thank, and I hope we just keep, stay the course, because I think we're doing okay, and keep the budget tight and keep on rolling, so. Appreciate that. We do have the, the chamber dinners on Friday, so that should be fun, and I just want to end with a sad note, there was a bad weekend for my son, Devil's on Friday insider. You know, other than that.
And thanks for your vote of confidence for Mayor Pro Tem. I hope I can do a good job as Rob.
Mr. Powell?
You know, I'm really looking ahead anxiously for 2018. I think, you know, we've got the companies that have come in that are looking at 2019, 2020 to start being in production, and we should see some earth being moved and some, some jobs in the community for those to settle in. I look ahead at so many opportunities that we have. One of the things that I personally, I'd love to see us look at the South Side a little bit on, there's things that we need to address over there. I think that, that we have been blessed this year with, with the council that works so well together, and, and I think next year, if we continue to do like we have with some of us being able to visit on a timely basis with the city manager and the mayor, I think that really helps keep everybody on the same page, and, and so I'm, I'm looking to a great 20, 2018, Mayor.
Very good. Ralph?
Likewise, I think it's a great year and so much positive that's occurring, and Larry, I really appreciated the email that you sent out to staff, because I think that really capsulized your leadership and your enthusiasm and your passion for, for the community, as well as for all the staff that work so hard. We really are blessed to be a part of Casa Grande. And along with that, I see it's great timing, because we have our city strategic planning retreat in a couple of weeks, so it just, it aligns real well. And there was a notice on tree recycling, and it was up till January the 10th, and I was coming in from leaving my daughter off at the airport at like 1:00 in the morning, and there's a big old tree, Christmas tree in the middle of the road, and had to swerve over to avoid hitting it, so I think it's better if you-
You didn't put aside with the tree?
I was like, quick, quick. And the National Association of Latino Elected Officials is having its annual conference this coming year in, in Phoenix, so it's really a good opportunity. And our agency, Pinal Hispanic Council, is hosting a roundtable of all the Latino leaders in Pinal County to put forth some recommendations for some of their workshops and some of their topics, so look forward to that.
We have two famous ones right up here somewhere.
I just wanted to compliment the police department, you know, the whole, the DUI task force. I think the word was definitely out, you know, for people to be safe and out on the streets. I know when I was out New Year's Eve, I usually stay home and I ended up going to a party, and I had my own designated driver, but, but it was a ghost town. I don't, I don't know how it was that night, but when I was out, it was pretty dead. It really surprised me, so I think people were in their homes, or, you know, if they're at parties, and I know the party that I went to, people were very safe, you know, wanted to make sure that they had their, had their driver, so just wanted to compliment. I think it's good to get the word out and, and let people know to, to be safe. I wanted to thank Larry, you know, he's been sending out these transit fact sheets, so I don't know, I hope you guys, you know, have read them. I did make copies for you all to have in your files, just in case you didn't print them. I know it was the holidays, but, you know, the transit committee has been working hard on this, and, you know, getting the facts and getting information, so there's been three fact sheets that, that Larry has sent out, so, oh, good. So if you, you know, can make sure you take a look at that. I think the, the committee is coming forward in March with the final recommendation, but-
At least I made sure to download those.
You have yours?
Oh, yes.
Okay, good. Well, I have copies in case. If anyone wants copies, they're colored even, colored copies, so.
No, but it's-
Yeah, so, so thanks for sending those. I know they're working hard on getting the information out to the council, so, but yeah, same thing, I'm looking forward to a great year. It's, yeah, exciting times.
Great. Well, first of all, I just echo Ralph's sentiment to staff and, and to you, Larry, for all the hard work that everybody did last year, and looking forward to an even better 2018. I think we're poised for a lot of great, great activity, I think from an economic development standpoint, and, and really just from a, a community standpoint, I think we're in, in a position that a lot of other communities would be envious of. So I think our, our financial house is in good shape, and, and I think, again, we have a lot on the plate. If a couple of them drop, then we're going to be busier than we probably want to be. I did have a couple of things, a couple of things came out today that I wanted to share. This came from the Casa Grande Alliance, and I don't know if anybody's seen it yet or not, but this is, this is talking about, you know, being a positive parent and/or positive adult to, to young people. And so it's a 2018, basically, over half of Casa Grande teens who don't drink or use drugs choose not to because they don't want to disappoint their parents or another caring adult. So the point is that, that adults do have a tremendous impact on young people, especially teens, and so don't forget to, to talk to a teen and encourage them not to, to, to drink and, and not to do drugs, so. I think it's an important message, it's a good message, so I wanted to mention that. Also, be looking in January, the popular annual financial report will be out for, it will come in your bills, it will come in your wastewater treatment and your, and your garbage bill, so it's a great report. It's got great pictures of your council in there, so there are a bunch of good-looking people in there, and then it also talks about the, the last, the past year and what's going on, and some of the new projects that are out there, so it's, it's really full of a lot of good information, so I encourage you to read it when you see it. In fact, if you wanted to look at a copy, there's a copy. There we go. That's an advanced copy, so I'll have to take it back from you. And then also, the Parks Department, Parks and Rec sent out a, a piece today also on their schedule, so check, check the website, it's Get Outdoors in Casa Grande. It's a really nice piece, it's got, there must be a bazillion different activities that you can sign up for through the Parks and Rec, so, but, but take a look at it, go online on the new website, take a look at it and see, see what good information is on there. A lot of good things that your city's doing for you, and I just want to make sure everybody's aware of it.
Steve has no trouble staying busy.
No. No, with all that list of things on there?
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's extensive. So that's all I have. I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year, and-
We can't go into executive, Larry's not here.
We can't go into executive yet? We can.
No, she always makes the most of it.
Oh, I missed, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, before the motion is made on executive session, just one point of clarification for our citizens in the audience, we did have an item related to the judicial, to the city judge process, because that was not necessary as part of the action items this evening, and we will not be having any discussion regarding that process in executive session. This is going to be focused on the development agreements.
Okay. All right. I'll take a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Okay, been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move into executive session in five minutes. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Deva?